First item would be adoption agenda.
Move.
Second, adoption. It was a favor. The motion is carried. I mentioned that Councilors McKinnon and Swifter both agree. So we'll proceed with the staff reports. And the first one is regarding the downtown visualization program. And we do have a PowerPoint presentation by our planners. So there it is. Making these grand images. And we'll turn it over to Mr. Marvin, and then we'll discuss the report.
Thank you. I want to warn you ahead of time. This one's long. It's actually a two-part point presentation. So part one is really on downtown residential encouraging, residential development in downtown. And sort of the Comox context. So a lot of this is the background research that was done in developing the proposed downtown visualization program. So we'll first go through the background material, and then the program itself. So in order to be clear in the program effort, we were meeting the objectives. We wanted to be very clear on why we were trying to get residential development downtown, an idea of how much already exists, what potential was, and the public realm implications. Why residential? And that really came back to our downtown and sustainability in terms of economic, social, and environmental. It's all three. Economic, the critical one for us was to assist our existing businesses as well as attracting people. So not supply, supply. Exactly. Existing businesses. From social, the more residents we have downstairs, the greater the accessibility, the extensive amount of public open space and amenities that we do have downtown. We need a waterfront, services, and that has a relationship to the economic, the more new businesses we attract to downtown, the more services that will be available to residents. And within a concentrated area, then we also have increased allowance for social interaction. Environmental, more residential units we have downtown, the less pressures we have on our fringe areas, rural areas, the more efficient those housing forms are in terms of water usage, energy usage, reduced greenhouse gas emissions. How much exists? One big caveat, this is ballpark. This is off our D I S system. So it's to give you an order of magnitude, not precise numbers. What we really looked at is what was the existing population base within the downtown development area? That's development area number one. What is the population base within walking distance? Population base that we take a larger downtown neighborhood basis? And the implications of those numbers. Downtown D P A. So that's shown in red. Within that area, we have approximately 360 residential units. 134 of those are in Berwick itself. Translates into approximately 460 residents. And we tried to use some degree of accuracy by using the census tract average household size on that. And that, once we exclude parks and roads, were heavy on the parks in the downtown area, we got a unit per hectare, 20 units per hectare. Now we add in, in the orange. We're showing that to you in orange. Orange here, right?
Thank you, Philip.
So we start going into outside areas. Let's have been walking distance, 400 meters from the center. We add an additional 360 units, additional, sorry, additional 270 units, 600 residents. But within this area, once we exclude the parks from the downtown, it's actually slightly larger than downtown. The unit per hectare dropped to 14. The neighborhood itself, the green does work better than the orange. So the neighborhood itself, all of a sudden, we see ourselves adding approximately 1,640 additional residential units. We get up to a grand total of around 2,700. But we really started dropping in our units per hectare. The units per hectare actually starts to drop down to seven. Rule of thumb that we give developers coming in seeking to do developments is that we would like to get at least 33 units per hectare, as that's a sort of sustainability benchmark for, to support in a local corner store, not a commercial center, a little commercial center, just a corner store. And also in terms of the viability of transit. So, and you can see we have the declining density within approximately ballpark 20, 11, 7 in the downtown area. So that's starting to explain a lot in terms of how many businesses we have there, and some struggles that they're going through at this time. So in short, no, we don't have a lot of residential density or development in the downtown area, in the downtown neighborhood. So in terms of residential potential, again, we look at the D P A one boundaries, we look at land use, existing land use efficiency, the land use designations, and the official community plan. And as part of the land use designation, we also look at the vacant properties and maintenance levels. Okay? Downtown. So again, we're focusing on D P A number one. This is a very interesting map. Secondly, we do a shadow map. You start to get an idea of how much land is locked up in roads, and how much land is not utilized. It's utilized for surface parking or other things, but in terms of not buildings. This really struck home with us that we do have land potential in the downtown area. Downtown, the official community plan designation map. So again, we're in this area. We broke it down into blocks, just in terms of how to analyze it, and be able to reference different areas. Current land use. So this is what people normally think of when they think of our downtown. Vacant land? Yeah, we have a couple vacant spots, or town, town use spots. And, but mostly it's built up. Existing development, well maintained, a lot of people taking out building permits. So we see tenant renovations. So we've got good active interest in that, which are all positives. And we start getting into, okay, what is the potential? We look at our official community plan, and this is a point from our official community plan, where we're allowing for mixed-use commercial residential designations. So that's the red. And then we start looking at where we currently have it. And you can see, while we do have allowance for quite extensive mixed-use allowance downtown, we're really just touching the surface of the current point. We also started looking at existing building heights. One story going up to three stories, or maximum green. And you can see by the dark colors, again, you have quite a bit, quite a bit of development potential in the downtown area. Age of developments, again, darker, the older the buildings. You can see our housing, our building stock, while there's interest in it, and there are improvements, and it's being kept up, it is getting old. There's a location, and once we start looking in the downtown area, really focused on our prime areas, and it got interesting since we started looking at the historical context of this as well. Really, our downtown was built on the east-west, the Comox Street, and it's nice and flat. People could walk to it. And then the Moya. And in terms of providing that linkage up to the main street. So this is very interesting. And you can see, this is right from the beginning, and one of the basics that in geography and planning is, you have very successful towns, economic centers, had a junction of transportation, especially transportation, where you're switching different modes of transportation. So that really started to pound home to us in terms of the importance of that connection. We took all the things that we learned, put in a development matrix, added weighting to it. And again, this is nothing absolutely precise. It's to give you an order of magnitude of flavor. So we try to get a rating summary and see where we should target. And so target, of course, we have Port Augusta, that's on our main east-west, north-south axis. It's also key in terms of walkability, because we start getting into grades, and I'll get into that later on in my presentation. And then also, just in terms, we know we have development active, the Legion's Act is pursuing development. So we identified those areas. And that was the area basis for the proposed program that's being adjourned this time. And if you start looking at it just from an aerial view, in terms of, it shows where the buildings are, it shows where your parking lots are, how you utilize the land. Public realm implications, this really came back home. It's quite different, because we're, it builds on sustainability, so economic. So we're looking at maintaining existing businesses and allowing room for new businesses to go. What does that mean? We're going to use the land more intensively if we do that. Environmental, so again, using the land more intensively, using the land more efficiently. Social, having more people in an area, greater opportunities for them to interact and to use services. This is all going to push a number of things from private property on the public property and the public realm. As scary as they are, so what you need to, how we usually think of infrastructure or areas that we're going to go into, these implications have already started. If we just look at the pressures that council has faced probably in the last five to 10 years, in terms of attractive public space and amenities. So we focused a lot of resources on parks, getting into more in terms of walking sidewalks, where the interconnections are. You didn't expect that to continue into things such as, things that covered bike facilities. So for people who are, if we are successful, if we do have a lot of services downtown, and the idea of being a walking area, a central area that's protected from the rain, that they can then use those services. Also, in terms of bicycle paths, we're getting a lot of interest in that and doing expenditures. When we get into pedestrian and bicycle paths, the key points are going to be accessibility and the connections. More connections, the more accessible, more people use it. Accessibility really comes into, in the downtown context for grades. People don't like walking sidewalks. And you have an aging population. So in terms of where we do have hills, trying to be able to break those grades down to medical segments, having some seating areas where people that aren't in the, able to walk long distances, have a place to sit. And then public transit. Here's a little quote, essence of a successful downtown, sufficient pedestrian movement supported by transit. If we think of the areas that are really vital and really active, those are important contributions in those areas. So this is just to get a flavor of what things, as we start looking in the future, in terms of prioritizing areas for municipal expenditure on things such as sidewalks, and trying to even, get the biggest bang for our buck at the beginning in terms of increasing that pedestrian connectivity. One of the things that we should have to start looking at it is the grades. So this can, this just quickly shows you, well, listen, if you're here, yes, how are you going to get to downtown? You're going to follow this area, and you're not going to go out. I mean, it's things that we, we know, but doesn't necessarily, we know as a walker, as a user of the municipality, but we don't necessarily immediately translate that into our plans and into our priorities. So we see increasing focus on that connectivity. So we do have, we're, we are lucky downtown, we do have a grid network, but some of our blocks are quite long. So the idea of starting to look at where can we allow for better connections? And second, we look at better connections, and we overlay, of course, where are the grades? This starts to tell us areas where we would not want to invest in walkways, because we're starting to have a very steep grade. We also overlay things like, well, where, where are people actually going to go to? So not only to serve the user, the person who wants to walk, but also to serve the businesses. So for businesses to be successful, they need that walk-by traffic, they need that Bicycle activity, we're doing great downtown in terms of what our long-term plans are. So we have quite significant bike infrastructure, existing or proposed, and connections to the larger town as a whole. Public transit. This, to put extra emphasis on this, because of course, the 20-year, I believe it is, future transit plan is now before the capital, the Comox Valley Regional District. And the town has a very large vested stake in that plan. The official community plan and all the densification is really, if, targeted on transit-oriented design, increasing densities within 400 meters of existing transits. So we have the downtown densification, we have Anderton, redevelopment potential along Anderton. That's all been keyed into that kind of investment. And in terms of optimizing transit, we have to look not only at locations, stop locations from a point of view, generally we look at that access to users. Where's, to my front door, how can I access the system? If we're looking at it from a downtown visualization perspective, then we really have to look at its access to customers, have to bring in customers into the downtown. Same thing with service levels. Often we focus on the local service levels, how does it go to the neighborhoods? But what's going to be critical for the downtown is how do we get the downtown connected to the other urban centers in the Comox Valley? Even when we look at transit stops, if you have grades, you're going to start coming into it, and start looking at grades. Right now, this just quickly told us, we really are not looking at grades on our existing transit stops. We tend to have more stops on flat areas as opposed to where we do have steep grades. Also. Yo. Give me that. I didn't do it. Okay. Transit stop locations, so if we, the downtown area, so we have the topographical, when we start going into transit stop locations and trying to even out the distances, you can start to see that actually where we're short, certainly the downtown area. And you, we can't just do the automatic 400 meters would be ideal in the downtown, because there is some rationalization being, once you have something downtown, maximizing the number of businesses that they block by to get to the next stop. There's a little bit of argument in that. But again, this is just a concern in terms of what's going to go on. Also, in terms of how can we connect all the key interest points? And because we're on the end of a proposed rapid transit route, we do have the ability, these buses have to turn around. And so we can start looking at, well, okay, how do you connect to not just the mall and Comox Avenue, but what about the library? What about the waterfront? And the ability to get these buses turned around in a manner that also impacts those local objectives? So really, it does have major implications for the success of downtown, and in terms of focusing on access to customers and service levels. So critical importance, if I was going to point out one thing of the transit plan that has critical importance to the town, it is that central line of the 15th, 20th, and the service connecting there and the center. Proposed visualization program, so that was all the background, and that's what the proposed program is trying to insert itself into. Really focused on bank the box. So try to get something not only that's immediate, but something that, because this is a short lived program, will get its own life and increase the attractiveness of downtown to future investment for residential development, not only from a developer's point of view, but also from a resident's point of view, in terms of wanting to live downtown. And so we're focusing on the mixed-use properties, while the Comox Port Augusta access of being able to provide that. So the downtown visualization, so comparison to the background, essentially what it is, it's still Port Augusta Street, and we filled in from Comox Avenue from Port Augusta to Key elements of the program, the property tax exemption, the fee reduction rebate, comprehensive development guidelines, reduce parking, and limitation on town exposure costs. Tax exemption, key recognition in that is that if anybody is willing, is proposing to build four stories, they do have the additional hurdle, additional step-up, reselling application process. So we tried to tailor that, that, to even the playing field between the three-story and the four-story buildings. And that's why you see the proposed differential hit to 100% and 50%. Build green, bronze is essentially B C building code now. Our understanding is silver is a little bit more. So it's in terms of providing residential housing that's going to be seen as high-quality housing in the downtown. That's why we built it, proposed to build incentive on a three-year program for the build green silver. Building permit fee reduction, propose to have 50% for more stories, 20% for three stories. Again, looking at that reselling implication issue. And then, just in terms of marketing, ease of marketing, trying to tie in 50 and 50 for the development application fee we leave. So it's a simple 50% reduction in fees. We already have the downtown planning guidelines, comprehensive, on staff level, we're not having to do very much interpretation. We give them as a one package. We're just finishing off, otherwise just finishing off the water, sewer, storm studies in terms of our capacity downtown. And to the degree that we can, the more that we can provide potential interested parties, an upfront idea of if we need any road dedication, if so, how much where, sidewalks, what are we proposing in terms of where sidewalks would be provided or not provided, issues like that. Residential sound attenuation, that's already on our work plan for this year. So we bring that forward to get that in for this program. And there really would be, is if you're in the downtown area, instead of having to consult an acoustics engineer to find out things like insulation in walls and window pane separation to ensure that the noise doesn't transfer into the units, that will be provided in advance. We'll be able to provide a package upfront to the developer. Reduce parking. So we currently don't have differentiation between areas that, commercial areas that are targeted towards automobile usage versus pedestrian usage. So we really look, want to look at creating standards specific to the downtown area. Maneuvering aisles and parking stall dimensions, we currently have one. When in fact, there is a relationship between the aisle width and the stall width. Essentially, the wider the aisle width, the narrower you make your stall, because you've got the turning radius to get in. So proposing to build in that flexibility, so maximums and minimums, and also increase the small park percentage from 25% to 50%. Affordable housing, so there was a note on that. Proposal is to transfer, instead of the, affordable housing calculation is somewhat complex. We do have about to go online, beta version of our affordable housing calculator on the website. It also kind of seems a little bit counterintuitive to the proposal that council's looking at tax incentives and ideas for downtown, for residential development, because it's not occurring. And we're going to take a affordable housing contribution. So we try to, how could we deal with that without undermining the affordable housing program? So what we're proposing is to not have an affordable housing contribution during the term of this program, and instead require 50% of the applicable housing units. It simplifies the requirements, and it's still a placeholder, i.e., there is still something that's going on such that we don't provide the impression that affordable housing is something that simply can drop off the table. Limitation of town costs, really there, it's, the limited time offer is a key, key issue on that. That also hopefully will aid in marketing. There's a $50,000 target budget for the tax exemption. We also, to get what I feel would be a relatively large capacity out of that, when we're looking at that, we're looking at the residential building component only. So that's what we're going to try and target courage in, also compared to pre-development tax revenue. So for example, if you have a one-story commercial residential, and you're proposing to rebuild that and have a ground floor commercial, the same area, and then have residential above that, that would not trigger any drawdown on the $50,000 budget, because in essence, compared to the pre-tax revenue, it should be approximately the same. Also, Philip, that one, that will be key also in terms of trying to reduce some of the risk within our small market, in terms of developers, if they have a holding cost while they try to sell the units for market absorption. It's going to be a bit of a break on the taxes on that. It does apply to vacant unused land or in-stream applications, since this is under the Little Government Act, is for revitalization, that's the area that we're targeting in. And there's a $50,000 target for permanent fee, we got, and development application fee. End with that. Just any questions?
All right. Thank you for that very comprehensive lesson, including some history. Members of council, no doubt, have questions. So maybe just go around the table, Carl.
Well, on the inspections, you mentioned it doesn't apply to vacant land. Is that all, is that building inspection, reduce fees?
They use so a lot. And when it says vacant unused land, it's getting to, if land is vacant, like for example, the lawn, it would, there was a fire on it, there was a settlement insurance, there was the process of preparing development drawings, that will not be classified as vacant and unused. The intent is there. If someone had a building, so for example, someone has a vacant building that their tenants moved out, and they're actively trying to rent it, great, it's not vacant, it's not unused. The second you get into like, for example, a building that's been boarded up for 10 years, it's a holding property, then you start taking it to vacant and unused.
Okay, yeah, because I'm a little clear, because vacant land, rather than vacant building, is, many, you know, had it marked for your plan as vacant land.
Yes, there are two different categories. In terms of the more common on vacant, i.e., there's not a building there. And then in terms of the legal categories, we start to, it starts to take into account what is the tenement, what's on the property.
Okay, so you're kind of with that legislation being...
Yeah, yeah, it would apply to that.
Thank you. Counselor Tom?
Thank you. Marvin, I was considering a bit about the size of the redevelopment potential of the Comox Mall. You just included the corner of Port Augusta and Comox Avenue. It just seems to me it would make more sense if we expanded that area. I mean, I don't know if they have any intention of redeveloping it, but...
I have had a meeting with the property owner recently, and they are looking at redeveloping it. They really want to get a comprehensive plan of the entire site. That recognized, they, they realize the market of Comox Valley. You put on a 30-inch building, you might absorb the apartment demand for a year. So the idea of, if it's developed, will it be developed in phases? Yes, it will be developed in phases. So we really try to target that as a key corner phase. I believe, my understanding of their position is, it, the question will be, can that come into a part of a comprehensive plan? They may... They may wish to, well, they may wish to develop in phases, they may wish to first complete a comprehensive plan for the entire property, and that then pushes them out a year, two years.
And in the event that the uptake on this program is slow or nonexistent, are we flexible enough that we can expand it beyond the time limit?
Yes, I mean, at any time, council can bring the matter back. We've built in a six-month review period for, just exactly for that, so that you can monitor, what is the uptake, how happy are you with the different components, are not happy with the different components, if you wish to change them.
Okay. Right, Counselor Ken?
Yeah, I have the same thought. When I looked at the mall site, I wondered why we hadn't included the entire site in there. I think your plan here is, actually, it's really good. I'm quite impressed with the way you've done it. I think that, I envisioned a larger area, I guess.
So do we.
In my view than what you've got. And so, you know, I'd like to see us look at that a little bit, and the entire mall site is another one. One question that I have for you in here, on the, it's on page 11, I think, I beeped in the middle of your presentation with my battery gun. And it's regarding development fee rebate. I'm just not 100% sure how that works. If I'm reading that correctly, you would give them a 50% development fee rebate after completion of the building, or...
Yes, provided it was completed by October 31st, 2019.
Okay. So, yeah, and your rationale for not leaving the upfront one makes some sense. The other thing that I'd like to see us do, if we could, is, since we've got the Economic Development Society here, and they're going to be marketing this, I'm wondering if we could just send this for comment for them, if they could get that back to us within a couple of weeks, just so we can make sure that what they're going to market and what we're doing jives, so...
Our attempt is to send it to them tomorrow, depending on how community of the whole.
Yeah, 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 no fair enough.
You hit the program.
Yeah, but I'd like to hear their comment back before we proceed with it, that's all, so, yeah.
Yes, given the type of timeframes, the, if we are to make the June kind of deadline, and after June, we start running into some serious problems, just in terms of staffing and public notification, given the holiday season, request that council put their mind to whether they wish to authorize staff to proceed immediately on preparation of the bylaws, and also referral, or if they wish us to wait. The proposed timeline is based essentially on starting tomorrow.
But this would have to come to council next week, right?
Yes.
The authorization, so we've got a week there, and then the bylaws would come back. Are you anticipating them coming back at the next Cal? Or what's your timeframe for bringing it back to council? Timeframe probably going to give, suggesting time for CBA to provide any comment.
Yes, off the top of my head, all I know is that we were looking at adoption, we're getting this a little bit, the adoption prior to the election. So, I mean, we wouldn't have bylaws.
Obviously, it's got to come back to council for next week. The recommendation from community of the whole, if it passes, we go to council for approval. Then you work on it, carry on, and the bylaws would come back, and tweaks could be made as we can.
So if they've got it back to us within a couple of weeks, would be good to go? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, yeah, any input that's provided has to be done relatively soon, and staff will, assuming this passes next week, will proceed with drafting relatively quickly, because we do want to have it in place for July.
I think there's that. The other issue that I had, and you just touched on it, was, you know, if you're talking to mall guys, it was this whole notion of a phased development, because that site, to me, is sort of the game changer for how we can really get our downtown more vibrant. And I know our business people are quite interested in that, and so, you know, they would obviously not come in and redo the whole mall at one shot, but I think it's important or paramount that if someone comes in with a phased development agreement, or a phased development like that, that we have some provision in there to be able to make this work for them. And you touched on it a little bit, but I think that's an important aspect of this.
Okay, Patty, is there a chance here?
So two questions. One, I'm still not clear on how the program does not apply to vacant unused land. So...
It gets into the intent. It's under the legislation, it's specifically for downtown revitalization, not downtown development. So if you're going to revitalize an area, it's kind of inherent that something's already been done in that area, and wish to give it a boost as opposed to pre-去掉 development sites.
Okay. And then, how did you frame the Lorne Hotel site? How would you...
It's inactive, I mean, it's inactive development. It's just part of the normal process in terms of the steps that it's going through from a fire, you know, claims adjustment, and then the development plan.
And my next question would be, in consideration of some of these fee adjustments, what impact, or how do you analyze what impact that might have on our, affected our financial plan?
Yes, I mean, the, quite proposing the cap of $50,000. So if we got close to the $50,000 cap, then we'd advise the council, and if you wanted to implement that cap, then you would repeal the program at that time. There's nothing saying that the program has to be in for a certain amount of time, but anytime you can repeal it.
Go ahead, Marvin, you go first.
We actually have Tom, Marvin.
Just a small thing, Marvin, with the language in it, when you say that you want to build green silver, you know, you're laying out a specific program, and, you know, we ran into this when Patty and I worked on the expansion to the rec center. And you can achieve the same goals of having, you know, good quality building by just one little word there, built green silver equivalency.
That, sorry, that was our intent, to allow for built green silver or equivalency.
Yeah, okay, good. Because, you know, in order to be a, you know, to build green, then you have to go out and be a certified built green, and then you have to send them money, and it's an Alberta program. I just assume, use the word equivalency, and if you had that in mind, so thank you. And by the way, thank you very much for a very thorough report. It looks like you guys did some stellar work here.
Thanks, Matt. Mark?
All right, and I'm still, I'm here on vacant land. Sorry to go back to it, you know, vacant lands. Because my understanding was, is that it's an enticement. If you've got a building there, that you could argue its base is underutilizing that space, but someone's getting a revenue from that property, so they're less likely to want to pull it down. So that, I would say, that would be the difference between whether it's a vacant site or whether it's actually a functioning site.
If you have revenue, yes. I mean, if you were using the site for vacant, or you're using it for a parking lot, again, then the use would be established. The simple parameters are, an area that has been developed already, that's undergoing redevelopment versus a totally pre-去掉 site, a farmer's field for random development. It's not intended for a farmer's field for random development, it's considered where you've developed and you want to redevelop it yesterday. You get into, there is no, to my understanding, clear definition in Local Government Act of what revitalization means. So the second you get into a ground field site, so i.e. an industrial or a commercial site that was used at one time, and it's now due to market conditions, not being used, but the person's just waiting for the market to turn around, you start getting into gray areas. So in terms of, if there was a site that was vacant for five, 10 years, I'd say you're in that gray area for something, I guess, something like the lawn that is just, it's inactive redevelopment, it's part of the process, they couldn't really receive it at a faster rate. That's clear within the program.
Okay, so I'll have to question that one. On page seven, you mentioned that potential for increased staff costs.
Yes.
What, how do you see that? Do you see that part of this program that it would require more staff, more overtime?
Not necessarily. I mean, right now, the development situation I've been in for the last couple of years is... You know, it's, yeah, it's sort of undefined. It's, people don't know whether it's up, sideways, down. You just kind of have this idea that people are waiting. So what that's really done is their amount of our enrollment applications is down. So we're able to focus on programs such as this, and other priority items that council addresses in terms of developments, and meet those timelines. So it really depends on the greater development picture. If development takes off tomorrow, and we go back to the way we were five years ago, we couldn't meet our processing timeline targets just on rezonings and subdivisions, let alone then giving any other application a priority over them.
Okay, so sort of a red flag that it may or...
It may, and we're not, at this point, we wouldn't anticipate it. If we get incredible appetite, and we get four developments, or three developments at one time, then to give them priority processing, we have a limited number of people even of each. And once you give each one a priority program, a priority project that takes three months, they don't have the ability to do much else. So it really comes, depends on how many we get, what the scheduling is on us.
And on parking, I mean, it's unfortunate that we didn't have a chance to sort of test our relaxation we've done already on restaurants, because the restaurant that we still have in didn't. So I just wonder if you have any concerns, if we are putting a lot of residential development in the downtown without or limiting the parking that would go with it? I'm just wondering, A, whether you have, or the business community would have concerns about that in the long run. Now, I know that we're looking at more walkability at downtown, but people move to, they go to Courtney for something, they're working Courtney. So to think that everyone's going to just become pedestrians and cyclists, I think is probably not going to happen. And I know when the lawn was looking at the residential component, and looking at downsides in the parking, they did say, well, you've got the mall over there with all the parking. But if that's redeveloped, we may not see all that parking, so you are not...
Oh, no.
...assuming a concern here, or applying to go, oh, we're creating a problem?
We're not proposing to do anything but tweak the residential component. And so, right now, where we're at, the residential component is, residential above commercial is 1.25. So we're still looking at having a minimum of one per unit. And then, how we deal with that sort of visitor overflow, we'll have to figure it out a little bit. The market, the implications that we're getting back is, the market's higher than that currently. And that really comes into, I mean, we don't have rapid transit line, a 15-minute service. We still have all of our, you know, so we have sidewalks apart, which is on private property. We don't have those pieces in place yet. So no, we're looking primarily at the commercial component, the actual businesses themselves, and trying to rationalize that. And we see this as a great test case. I mean, I think that in terms of, I would, I'm 90% sure that the allowance for rationalization of parking aisles and parking stall widths would be something that would very easily roll out towards the whole town. It just kind of makes sense. It's just in that, your complexity, it should work in all forms. 50% parking, small car parking, again, that's just an allowance that are able to go less than that. So I think there's going to be components that we can test out in terms of the regulations and how well they work from the developer's point of view in the downtown, that will have further sort of legs, be able to implement it in other areas of the town, and some things that will be strictly downtown itself.
And, thank you. And on the public component, you mentioned public notification, so I take it there's no public hearing involved in this process? So I would like to see more of a public component, because I think, I mean, there's some very interesting things here. I know that in the past, height has been a big issue in our community, and I think our community would like to comment about this. This one could have a significant impact on our downtown, how it looks, how it, you know, how it grows, from being one, two, three stories, or six, seven stories, will have a significant impact. And also that tax shifting, because whenever you shift money from one place, you have to shift it somewhere else, and that becomes, as you know, onto the residential tax bill, because we're backing off the business tax bill.
No surprise, I didn't follow you there. This is a revitalization program, which, intent of it, if it works, will actually increase the value of properties, and for a short timeframe, will be tax exemptions. After that, the enhanced value of these properties will create more and more tax revenue for the town, the more successful the businesses are, downtown by virtue of that will create. So all we're talking about here is seeding a process that'll hopefully bear some fruit down the line. And if you look at Victoria, you look at the NIMO, you look at other cities that have done this, they have been way further ahead in terms of their revenues. So this is a, this potentially is a huge win for the tax base. So this is not, and I guess what I hear the planning department saying is, you know, within the $50,000 limits that we have for both these programs, we can achieve a lot. And I'm not saying that this will all work over the next six months, but hopefully over the next number of months and years, there will be an improved benefit to the town's tax base and its revenues overall. So I think you're going down the wrong path here to talk about a tax shift. We have, of course, the budget to talk about here later on, and we're not talking about shifting taxes between residential and commercial, we're talking about enhancing the tax base for the downtown, and improving the success of businesses. And that's what these programs are all about, and that's what they've shown to be successful in other parts of this island. So I'm not sure where you're going with that.
I hear what you're saying, in the long term, the taxes will come back. So that was a side issue. My, I would like to see a public component in this, and I appreciate that we're trying to get it off the ground fast, and I'm not 100% clear, you know, of the rush, because I think you do have a job when it's...
I think nobody's rushing it.
But I'd like to see a public component.
We spent about two and a half years working on this topic.
The, in terms of public component, our downtown support, the very, the existing development that went over the general zoning max on 10 meters, we got the 10-meter max from height established. So anybody proposing anything higher than a three-story building, well, anybody proposing three stories, generally speaking, anybody proposing three stories or less, everybody has that granted as an allowance of their existence. Anything above that would trigger rezoning application, and would trigger public hearing on this particular proposal. So there would be nothing in general, we can't talk about absolutes, that is going to come forward on a larger building, going forward on the residential application.
And you also have to harken back to the OCP, which was adopted in 2011, which identified several sites which could be considered for increased height. And you know, if you're going to achieve those densities that are needed for success in downtown business terms and transit, and all those other things that are highlighted in our OCP, you're going to have to build up. Now, obviously, council will have to draw its mind to specific applications and rezonings. The public process, I mean, this is a public meeting, we've had numerous other meetings around this topic. You know, I see that potentially, if council directs that, we could host an open house, perhaps, but that would be something that council would have to direct. There might be some opportunity there, but to throw it to a full, you know, downtown rezoning, or OCP memo, I'm not talking about that, it's already enshrined in our OCP. Anyway, we'll see where it goes. Ken and Patty?
All right, well, Marvin, can we talk about this vacant land thing? No, just kidding. Yeah, now that we know the answer. I'm just wondering about applications that are already in the pipe, and why we would be exempting those. It would seem to me that many of those have been sitting in the pipe for a long time, and it's the economics that are the problem. If we could enhance that or help them in some way to get started sooner, is that not the whole intent of this program? So to exempt them because they're already in the pipe seems a little counterintuitive to me.
If, I guess it depends if, if, what's council's intent. I mean, if council's intent is to encourage new development or development that is not occurring, if it's already in the pipe, then... And the other thing is, I don't believe within the proposed program area, we have anything that's in the pipe right now.
Yeah, well, we're thinking of expanding that, so...
And if you...
That was your map.
If anyone wants to resubmit an application, or a new application, then that, you know, if their current model wasn't working, then they'd be resubmit.
Then they could, they could resubmit, and that would...
Wouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, I mean, there'd have to be changes made to their application pay.
They'd have to start fresh.
Yeah, I mean, again, this is, this is an area that is only being guided by the fact that the legislation says it's a revitalization area. So it's encourage revitalization of the area. There's, and then it's just a matter of, you know, some things are obviously within, and some things are obviously without, beyond it, and you get into the gray area. So we try to stay, the current proposal is based on staying totally out of anything for... gray.
Well, it just seems to me that in the short term anyway, if, you know, if we can add some more density to our downtown that's going to walk to our shops, to me, that makes sense, that that would be revitalization. And if it's an application that's sitting in the pipe and not going for economic reasons, then to me, that fits exactly into what we're trying to do.
And Council President, something we could resub, I just, I don't know, based on those parameters, I couldn't give you the answer right now.
Okay. There has to be a point in time where it starts.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So if somebody wants to resubmit, then they could fall under those guidelines. Patty?
Okay. And so just for clarification on the tax exemption, the residential component piece is the tax exemption. The land and the commercial piece is still...
It's still be taxed.
Correct.
The town portion only.
Yes.
So even the resident, the land portion that may be attributed to residential would not qualify. It's the residential building portion.
Exactly. Okay. And then also in your processing procedures, you talked about a public notification of proposed tax exemption by law.
Yes, we do have, we do have the advertising paper.
That would, that's what it would be, an advertising in the paper, maybe on our website or...
Similar to what we do with our annual property tax exemption.
There are, it's a stipulation in the statutes, so we follow the statutes.
In terms of expanding the area and talking about in-stream applications, you haven't included at this point the waterfront hotel slash condo project. We know that it's approved to a waterfront hotel stage in terms of development permit. Now, we haven't, to my knowledge, received any further application in formal terms for that project, and we don't know whether we will, given market factors there. But is there any particular reason why we wouldn't include that site if there was a new application, especially if it did include residential mixed use, why we wouldn't include it?
We just really focused on the guiding principle in terms of being the access, the Comox Port Augusta access, and to really give a sort of a technical starting point or endpoint, whatever council wishes. The sort of individual merits of a specific property, we're looking at the guides from council on that.
And the same with the mall. I know this, we talked about it already, but the portion of the mall you're talking about is the Comox Port Augusta frontage as opposed to the back half of the mall as it goes towards the bigger stores. Okay? Ken?
So, yeah, I think it's important, at least for council, to know that this kind of program isn't new. There's hundreds of communities in B.C. that are doing this kind of thing to varying different degrees. And, you know, it may be new to us, but this is the way that many communities are finding their way to revitalize their downtown, get their downtowns back going. And, you know, if you, if you look, you'll find 100 different variations of how this is done. So it's not new. It's just new to us, so...
All right. So we kind of bounced this around the table quite a bit. We have a recommendation that staff would like us to consider, and that is, I thank you again, Marvin, for an excellent presentation and for your patience in dealing with our questions. That staff will be authorized to draw necessary bylaws to implement, et cetera, as printed. And that includes the tax exemption bylaw, the parking bylaw amendment, the fee reduction for building permits, and the fee rebate for development application. So if we could move on in a second, and we can discuss any formal amendments to it at this time.
Sure.
All right. Are there any amendments that one would like to consider? Council President?
And I'd just like to ask that we also host a public meeting to defend the draft bylaws.
Do you have a second after that? Okay, on that amendment, so we'll deal with them one at a time, probably. So, CAO, just on that, do you see that as being feasible within the timeframes?
Uh, no. It would add a bit of a delay simply because if we're going to host a public meeting, we do have to provide for an opportunity to advertise. And we do want to, we don't want to be accused of rushing the public meeting aspect of it. So we would have to use efficient... So we would have slippage on our implementation time.
Because we're looking at bylaws perhaps in May, first second reading, and then first and second reading, public meeting in June.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Sorry, no, we're off.
On the amendment?
I was going to...
Anything further on the amendment? You know, I understand what Council President's getting at there, and I certainly encourage public interest in this, I think, which means we can put this out to the public, certainly through the local media, press releases and whatnot. But to go through the exercise of hosting a public meeting on this when it's been something we've talked about for two and a half years, I just don't see it. And it might turn it as well into a misunderstanding around, you know, overwaving heights and all this other stuff. So those are going to be clearly dealt with on a rezoning application, and that's my sense.
Yeah, and all we're doing here is trying to, we're really implementing the OCP. You know, we're trying to add some stimulus here to follow what we've already decided on in the OCP. And, I mean, how many public meetings did we have with the OCP? Lots, lots, so. I wouldn't like to see a delay caused by, I mean, this is an incentive program. This isn't changing the OCP or the heights in the downtown or anything. Marvin?
Yes, I'm just going to hear about the really tight timeline and that there isn't room to accommodate a public meeting which could be advertised starting tomorrow. We have talked about downtown revitalization right from the beginning of this term, and it's certainly in our strategic plan. And we did have a report on the Maple Ridge program a number of months ago. But now, this, the details, basically, are new to me. And so I just have a much greater comfort level if it's, you know, if we go in conjunction with the public in getting up to speed on it. And there's a lot of good things, and I can see the planning department, a lot of time and effort, and this could be a really great thing for Comox, but I think public input is essential.
Thank you. Any further on that? One amendment, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion to keep it on the amendment, further amendments?
Yeah, I'd like to see us expand our boundary level to, I would make it the BIA boundary. So that would take us to, what, Ellis, I guess we don't want to go all the way to Ellis, but that would, that would then include the entire mall site, the hotel site, and I believe it takes us up around the golf course as well.
CAO, Marvin?
Is that, is the BIA boundary the same as our DPA boundary?
Is that, is it different?
I don't know.
I don't know. Well, where I'm trying to go with this is I'm thinking...
Can we put up the DPA now?
Yeah.
DPA one?
Here's where I want to go, I want it to be two, Stewart Street and over here in your room.
Let's see what the DPA...
I think it's the DPA, it might be pretty close to the DPA, although the DPA left out just the very end of Comox Avenue as you get down to Stewart.
They require that up in a minute.
My oranges and browns aren't there yet, so...
So motion to expand the boundary to something that will be considered here shortly.
As soon as the light comes on.
Yeah.
Well, if you wanted to, we could move on ahead and then go to where I wanted to include...
Okay, we'll deal with that in a second. Go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to include the, those projects that are already in the system.
New applications, so do you have a second for that? Okay, so including in-stream applications, we'll move to second. CAO and planner, we need to talk about that from a legal point of view.
Correct, yeah, we'll need to research whether that's possible.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, my comments on that are that I think we should focus on new applications. If in-stream applications or approved applications that haven't yet been built aren't going anywhere, then those developers and proponents need to review their, review their marketing and consider whether they're going to reapply. I don't see this going back over, potentially, if you look at some developments like Dane Humans five years ago, I don't see that happening as, I don't see that as being the real objective of this. And I think what we should be doing is encouraging, and if we only have a cap of 50 or 100,000 with both sums, we need to focus on the stuff that's to be proposed rather than the stuff that's already happening for whatever reason it hasn't proceeded, so I won't support that. Any further discussion on the instreams? Concern about legal still, if I still need to require on that? Are you ready for a question on that? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion to keep it. All right. Where are we getting there? Any further amendments before we talk about boundaries? One, one concern I have, and I don't know whether I'm going to, it should be moved as amendment or not, is possibly considering expanding the timeframe for the exemptions from one and a three-year to a three and a five-year. I'm prepared to let that sit for the moment, see if there's take-up on it. I can just think from a residence point of view, you know, buying condos, I know in Victoria, they do 10-year agreements, and that's a real incentive for somebody buying downtown. Now, it's a different market altogether, of course, but, you know, whether there's any appetite for that consideration?
You know, I think that's a good idea, and I wonder if we should wait to hear back from the Economic Development Society because that might be one of the recommendations to come back from.
Okay, I'm prepared to be there for that. Okay, there's your, sorry, that's one map. That's not quite the right one. Is it, or is it?
Well, this is DPA one.
That's DPA one?
Yes.
Okay.
So does that cover you? More or less?
Yep.
Did you not want to have that in here?
Well, I'd like that, and I'd also like those properties up on the top of Val Morl to be in as well, at least. Yeah. Because I can see those guys resubmitting, right? We have a couple of things in the pipe, Dane Humans is in the pipe.
They're not BIA, right?
No, they're not BIA, no. But they're, but they're densifying our downtown and they're, so, I mean, that map is fine if we just included those two pieces.
So you're talking about two pieces that are essentially in-stream applications?
Yeah, but, but I'm saying that, if you're saying that they could come and reapply, then perhaps they would, and this may be the impetus to get them going.
But I thought we already...
Well, we reviewed that one, but if you're saying...
Or if they were to come and reapply, right?
You're saying expand the boundary to include that area plus...
All the way to Stewart on Comox Avenue and up on, is it?
On the north side of...
Yeah, Val Morl, on the north side of Val Morl.
To Pritchard? Or to Stewart, sorry?
Yeah.
Right.
Which is only, there's only really one or two...
You're talking about along Comox Avenue, south side to Stewart, and the north side of Val Morl to Stewart.
Yes.
Okay.
Plus the hotels.
That's it.
Plus the hotel, yeah, that's that map, including those two pieces.
All right.
I would second that motion.
That's been moved in second. Everyone clear on what we're talking about here now? Patty?
So the comprehensive development guidelines based on DPA number one are part of the package, were they not? So now we've gone outside of that. So now those that are outside of it don't comply or have to.
Right.
So I'd rather not, I'd rather stick with the area.
Just the area in the brown one?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, anything further on that? So it's been moved in seconded to sort of this...
Or are you thinking you'd like to make that amendment?
Ken?
Yeah, I would amend the area to be strictly the DPA number one.
DPA number one?
DPA number one, which is what you're looking at.
Patty, ask why?
What's on the guidelines?
Because of the guidelines. Because those other ones fall outside of it, and they're not part of the guidelines, which is part of our proposal.
So your motion to amend the amendment would be to, to take those two areas out, not extend it beyond, whatever words were after extending DPA number one.
DPA number one.
Just leave it at that. Second for that? Is there a second for that amendment?
Just trying to get my head around that for a second.
So can you clarify that, Ken?
So part of our incentive tools was based on the guidelines of DPA number one. So the minute we go out of that zone, those additional areas are not required to meet the guidelines of DPA number one. So you got two different premises. So I'd like to...
A little second there?
Okay, let's move to second on that amendment.
Could we just have Marvin then make a quick, short statement on?
Certainly.
Yeah, Patty's correct. The development permit, the guideline, the design guidelines downtown Comox Avenue could not apply. Those additional properties would be subject to other development permit or design guidelines, and those would apply. Those are also very comprehensive with the new right of the OCP. So they're of the same standard. The waters, sewer and storm would, programs would analyze those areas as well. And the only issues would be with the timelines in terms of looking at road dedications and infrastructure upgrades. It's a question of how much we could get upfront for the startup of a program in June, but we could, of course, continue to work on this. So the, in other words, I guess, the short of it is if council wished, the program could be amended in its entirety to include those areas, would be little tweaks in the program according to that word, council.
CAO? I, I still have a little bit of discomfort if we were to include those areas that have, excuse me, in-stream applications that, if they reapply, I mean, if it, if it walks like a duck, and it's a duck, whether they, whether they apply or not, could, could put us in a little bit of trouble. So I would still like to get clarification on that from, about the lawyers to ensure that we could do that.
Okay, any clarification? We have that. Well, it depends whether this amendment that Patty's proposed carries or not. If not, then we're back to DPA number one. I'm sorry, if so, then we just have DPA number one. Yes. On the amendment to your amendment, those in favor, Patty's amendment? Those opposed? Motion's carried. So we're back to DPA number one as an amendment is proposed. I mean, further to add on that, all those in favor? Motion's carried. All right, so one amendment to this point that is going to pass, which is to expand it to that area is DPA number one, we referred to. And that will give staff directions, carry on the back. Anything further? Okay, on the main motion as amended by that one amendment, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion's carried.
So we would still have time to make some changes subject to a CBA as the...
Absolutely, the bylaws have to be yet to be drafted. And we'll consider that. All right, so moving on to the next item. For receipt, we have a report on the Bullford Avenue and Glacier View Capital Projects. So receipt, that, all those in favor? Motion's carried. The report is self-explanatory, and staff aren't looking at any particular recommendation. They have already awarded the contract for the Bullford Avenue upgrade. And as far as Glacier View Drive, they're just going to proceed on the basis that the savings on that storm zero will be applied towards the work on the road itself. Anything further, CAO?
Just engineer Shelley Ashfield advised me today on the, on the statement that the project also includes installation of sanitary name 350 meters from Norton, that should read Alder, which is actually on the other side of Comox Avenue, across from the...
Of course.
It doesn't change the numbers or anything, it's just Norton is the wrong one, it's looking, should be Alder.
Thank you. Any further? Okay, Patty?
And I'm just curious on the Glacier View Drive, how it works. We had that one proposal right at the top of Glacier View Drive, Comox Avenue, and I thought they were to be responsible for some sidewalk work there. And is this that sidewalk, or we just proceed against, I'm just wondering how it fit into that next?
Yes.
So we basically, we took that into consideration, or we're just going to stop north of that property, knowing how the development's going to be happening? And it's on that side of the road, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, anything further on that when we move on? We have, for receipt, the project summary on the Public Works Perks Building Project Updates.
You proceed.
On receipt then, all those in favor? On receipt then, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Anything else to report on this? It's relatively self-explanatory, CAO, I'll let you add any further you need to say.
Um, no, I just signed up the contract for the prefab steel building, and tenders for the other portions will be opened on Al 17, was it?
Seventeen, two o'clock.
Yeah, next Thursday, and we're still on track.
We await the results.
Yes.
Great. Patty?
Great report, really exciting. There aren't a lot of homes in the area, but will there be the ability to perhaps help by some of the neighbors that, where major work's going to happen in the near future in that area? Not a lot of homes, those that are nearby will certainly be your favorite tracks.
Okay, staff will take care of that. Any further? Seeing none, move on to the next item, Point Home Water Local Area Service Parcel Tax Amendment to that for adding one property and motion to bring that forward to council for first and second.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? None, all those in favor? Motion's carried, that'll come to us next week. Second draft, 114 financial plan, staff have touched all the numbers in final detail, hopefully, and we're at a point now where they're looking for council to, to be brought forward to next week for first, second, and third grade.
Moved.
Second.
Second, and any discussion?
You know, we started this last year with staff really taking a closer look and fine tuning the budget before it even gets to council, and for the second year in a row, and I've sat here for 12 budgets, that it's wonderfully painless the way we do it now, and I want to congratulate staff for the work they do on the budget.
Certainly echo that, I'm sure the rest of council will thank them for their diligence and keeping on top of it, and in particular, hopefully, curse this next bid process, beginning the bids out early in the construction season, which is generally should produce, and I know that takes a lot of work on staff's part, but it also took council's portability to set aside funds in previous budgets in this budget for those infrastructure projects, so good work.
Yeah, I'd just like to pass along from the Downtown Business Association that they were quite thrilled to have the 0% tax increase for businesses, and they see it as council really trying to make some steps, or, or council and town to really make some steps towards, you know, helping them up and getting their businesses working as well as the earlier planning report, so they're quite excited about the fact that town's really showing some initiative in what they're doing, and that really helps a lot, so pass that along.
All right, excellent, thank you. So 1.1% is for residential and zero, assuming these all go through necessary readings. All those in favor? Motion's carried, welcome to council next week. All right, and the tax rates by law, which companies that, page 5...
What's the recommendation?
Just like first, second, and third grade of council? All those in favor?
You worship, sorry, there is one typographical error.
Oh, here we go.
That we found this afternoon.
10%.
So on page 88, from page 88, the downtown BIA rate drops from 1.5658 to 1.5657. I know it's in the decimal, but we've been triple checking, and we found that one error.
With a fourth decimal point?
Yeah, I know, but we may as well get it right.
All right, we have to crunch that number. All those in favor?
I'm in favor.
All right, we do have an encounter meeting, so motion to school the public is required. I'm second.
Second.
In favor? Motion's carried. And we'll adjourn briefly while that's...